So.
Thank you, Marcos. Your presentation. Is there any, at this time, very important questions on that presentation? No? Theresa, you add, subtract?
So with that Chairman Toffenelli, we would like to move into the TOT discussion, if that suits the board.
Before we do that, yes, we can move into that. But is there any, any public questions on the present, that presentation? Not the budget itself, but that presentation? Staff? Any online?
There are no online comments.
Okay, yeah, so we will move into TOT.
Perfect.
Chair Toffenelli.
I am employed by the CVB, and to avoid any appearance of bias or conflict of interest, I'll be refusing myself.
Okay. We will let you know when we get past it.
Thank you.
All right, and at this time, let me pull up TOT. So in this current budget, I'll share my screen real quick. So in our current budget, we have allocated $2.45 million. At this time, we have 25% going to FIRE, 25% going to the Sheriff's Office, 25% going to Public Works, and then we have $400,000 going to the CVB. And the remainder in the current budget, we have transferring to the general fund. We did have a request a few months ago for the, from the Chamber for $50,000. And at this time, I know they are here, and they would like to speak more to that request.
Okay. Sherry, you have a presentation, a short one?
I do.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break while you sit down. Susan, you're good? All right. We will go back into session, and I believe Chamber, Sherry, you have a presentation, short presentation you'd like to give to the board for TOT.
I do. So my name is Sherry Roos, and I'm the current president for the Calaveras Chamber of Commerce. And this is Susan Weatherby. I'm NOM's CEO for the Chamber of Commerce. And we want to, go ahead, Marcos, just kind of talk, we had talked to you, I believe it was a month ago or so, that we came and kind of gave a presentation about the Chamber. And so we just wanted to kind of give you some reminders of our Choose Calaveras campaign, and how that this is helping us to keep dollars local, grow our businesses, and keep our tax dollars in our county, which builds our economy. Our Choose Calaveras decals our reminders for tourists also to support Calaveras County businesses. Just a reminder of our partners that we have now, and we're super excited to, in our building, that we are working with the Visitors Center, CMCAA, By the Mode Job Training, SBDC, trying to make it a one-stop shop for our employers and employees. Your Calaveras Chamber mission is to become a one-stop shop for our businesses. Our partnerships with the Visitors Bureau will help us with the tourists in the county, and the TOT will provide resources necessary to promote the west end of the county, keeping more tourist dollars local. With the assistance of the TOT, the Chamber will have the staff to create this wonderful Your Chamber will partner with other entities such as the fair, wedding venues, and other local festivals to help promote tourism in our wonderful county. And why it's important to join the Chamber? So currently, we are 216 members strong. Being a member of the Chamber builds trust and confidence within your community. The Chamber is a local and regional voice for advocacy. It will bring visibility to your business aimed at local tourists, provide businesses to learn and grow through training and business resources, and joining our family will grow local businesses. With our partnerships at the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce and our ongoing collaborative work with the Visitors Bureau, we would like to ask the Board of Supervisors to consider giving Calaveras Chamber of Commerce a small portion of the TOT funds to help us with this endeavor. We are asking for $50,000. This investment will create another mechanism to promote economic development and prosperity in our county. These funds would help the Chamber to draw tourists to the west end of the county, including our up-country businesses and stays, help the Chamber to grow all businesses, assist the CVB in getting tourists to golf, stay, eat in Valley Springs, San Andreas, McCollum Hill, West Point, and railroad flat. These communities have wonderful Airbnbs, great restaurants, and an abundance of outdoor Thank you. Are there any questions?
Are there any board questions? No? Is there any public comments? Online?
There are no online public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you.
And prior to making any decisions, I want to kick it over to our CEO, who has some more information for the board as well.
So I believe Marcos presented what is included in the budget book, which was what we had in May for the allocations, which was the 25% to FIRE, 25% to Sheriff, 25% to the Public Works Department, and then $400,000 to the CVB, and then a 212 contribution going back to the general fund. On May 9th, the board made a referral to the admin office to take a look at how we might fund Parks and Rec Department. So we have looked at the budget in TOT to see if we could find a way to make that happen. And I will say, I have to commend the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Morgan Kachi and Jessica. They came into our office, they went through every single line item in their budget. They had made some recommendations in their budget to support some things that the county is looking to accomplish. One of them was a Parks and Rec master plan study. And then the other line item was to support the Chamber in order to support additional tourism recruitment efforts over in the west part of the county. So if we were to make those adjustments, we would take $75,000 from the CVB this year only, because I do believe that this is a one-time opportunity. They've not been spending during COVID on promotion as much as they normally do, because obviously tourism was a little bit repressed during that time period. So they do have a larger-than-normal reserve balance in their budget. That's why they had budgeted the $75,000 for the Parks and Rec study. So we're looking at pulling that for Parks and Rec. And then they also had budgeted $50,000 to support the Chamber, so we would look at just providing that contribution to the Chamber directly, if that's your board's decision. So those would be the recommended changes in order to support the Parks and Rec, and then taking the 212 extra from TOT and putting it in that Parks and Rec line item as well. So that, that was just an opportunity for us to give our thoughts on how we might reallocate TOT to provide funding for all of the different folks that we feel are adding a tremendous amount of value to our community.
Got a question?
No.
Thank you very much, Theresa. Theresa, you mentioned putting the money to the Chamber to support activities on the west side of the county. Does that mean CVB is not going to cover the west side, or is this additional to?
No, it would be additional. The CVB does a great job of covering the entire county. They've had some travel writers in recently to talk about some of the amazing things to do throughout Calaveras. They've also had some professional photographers that have done some amazing photography of the county. You know, this county's pretty photogenic anyway, so, but great to have those photographs for us to continue to promote what a fantastic place this is to visit.
So just to be clear on your recommendation, you're saying, and I saw, I saw the CVB proposal, so $75,000 for the Parks Master Plan they had in it, and $50,000 for the Chamber, which they're also asking for. You're saying sweeping those from the contribution of $400,000 and making that number $275,000? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, for this year only, though. It would go back to a normal contribution next year, because I, I don't believe that you want to reduce the efforts of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I think it's very important, especially for the TOT, which is where this funding is coming from, that we have those robust marketing efforts going on.
Theresa, you mentioned that there is a, a excess of funds available in the CVB. How much money are they sitting on?
So right now, I believe it's 500,000. Marcos can confirm that. We did go through that with them.
There, I'm not sure if somebody's here from the CVB that would like to speak to that. I don't want to get the number wrong.
I think Jessica is here. And Jessica, I do want to say thank you, because you have been phenomenally helpful through this entire budget process. You guys have gone above and beyond, so thank you so much for your efforts. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So the breakdown of the balance of that is the, is the, what we would need to finish through the rest of this fiscal year, and what we need to finish through the end, probably take us through November, to cover operating costs and our contract obligations and our marketing costs and whatnot. So that would be about 300. And then there is what we have in our reserve, in our savings, that's the 100,000. There's also, I'm going to say there's 25 to 45, I don't have an exact number right now, but that is what is the museum, to continue the museum through the rest of the fiscal year. That's money that's raised with admissions and the stipend from, it is not TOT. But that is what is also, you see that, that's included in that final number there.
I think I'm asking, on your balance sheet, you get one sitting on April 30th, that's $557,000 in your checking account. I just want to make sure that it's probably about the same.
So I brought one, that's as of June 13th, and it's, the checking is now $493. And that's because we've had, that was our cost since April.
Of course.
And then that's got to continue to get us through, as I said, through the end of, we don't see the next TOT check until probably November. So because we don't get one from this quarter, because the county's already given, we've already gotten their complete funding for the fiscal year, so we don't, we won't see anything until, for the first quarter, July, August, September.
$493.
So we won't see that until November. So we do need to cover those obligations.
Yeah, the fiscal year starts in July 1st, and what you're saying is you don't see the first check for July 1st until October.
Usually you get it between November and December, yes.
Yes, September, October, approximately. And we understand that, and that's the time it backfills to the July 1st with that, with that number, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so right now, it's $493.
I have a question.
Okay.
But, but I do have a question.
Yes.
That, that's your total checking account. That, that includes, that's not just TOT, correct?
That's correct.
The museum?
Yes, museum.
And the city contribution?
That's correct. That means, that also needs to operate the museum.
That's for the entire museum and CVB?
Yes, that's correct.
And just, just to understand that, you're talking about the museum, that's the city's portion to put in the museum in Angels Camp, plus the actual money that comes in from the museum for people that visit it and everything. There's, is there a, a cost for them to visit the museum?
Yes. So there's admissions to the museum? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, it's, so these funds represent those admissions that we receive, and they're from the stipends?
Very good. So that, so that, those admissions will continue all the way before October, when you get your first TOT installment?
That's correct.
So you do have, you do have revenue there?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I just have one more question in the chamber, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
You have, in your budget, you had $15,000 set aside for visitor signage in Utica Park.
So that was of the 200 that, is that extra? Is that, is that what you're referring to?
No, it was in the budget that you sent.
The non-recurring expenses?
No, ma'am, it was a one-time expense. It was listed alongside the events program, the Parks and Rec program, and then you had $15,000 set aside. I'm just curious what it is about.
$15,000 for signage?
Yes.
I will have to double-check on that, because that could, I'll have to double-check. That could be an error, but I'm, can I get back to you on that? I don't have it in front of me to refer. Because there's $15,000 in a non-recurring expense, that was part of the 200 that we, it was part of the 75 that we, and the 50 for the Chamber, and then there was 15 that we were going to put towards the signage. Doing that, that's a non-recurring expense, it's not.
Right.
And that's probably from the Angels Camp portion that they give you, correct?
Correct, from the TOT.
It is using the park?
Correct. Yes.
That's, that's, sounds pretty reasonable to me, Mr. Garmody.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposing it, I'm just asking.
Yes. Make sure I'm answering the right question.
No, it's okay.
Is that it, Jack?
That's all my questions.
Ben?
I'm fine for the moment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and, and so those were suggestions made by the CEO, and I guess right now, we're looking for board direction on the remainder of the 212, continue putting it in the general fund, reallocating to Parks and Recs, CVB, do we give them the full 400, or take out the 75 and the 50, and move that to either the general fund or Parks and Recs? So we're just looking for direction.
Here's, you have comment, you have a comment?
Here's my take on it. I, I'm not opposed to doing that this year, and I want to thank CVB for doing that. But I think the Chamber is asking for, for continuing, not just one year, they're asking to continue. So, I mean, we can do that this year, but we're going to be in the situation that same next year, which I don't think CVB's going to help, that we're going to be looking to give them $50,000 from the total overall TOT that we bring in. And, and we're putting $212,000 right now into our general fund, contingency fund. So I just keep that in mind for next year's budget, that I believe it would be a continuing thing, much like we're doing with the FIRE department, which is Sheriff, Public Works, going forward, which I'm not opposed to, but I think we need to look at that.
Okay? Any other comments? Ed, your lights on?
Are we ready for a recommendation? Because I'm ready to give one if, if, unless we want to call for public comment.
Yeah, we need public comments first. Is there any public comments on this item or any of the presentation given forward? Morgan?
I have to say something. All right, well, good morning, Supervisors. My name is Morgan Kachi, and I am a resident of District 2. I'm a business owner in District 4, and I formerly ran the Calaveras Chamber of Commerce, District 1. And today, I come to you as a volunteer of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. I apologize, I was unable to attend the Visitors Bureau presentation in April, and want to just take a moment to share some exciting updates and clarify some points. So Visit California recently released the D and R visitation numbers for 2022, and Calaveras had $246 million come into the county from our visitors. That's $30 million more than we reported in 2021. I believe both those numbers are unprecedented amounts of tourist dollars coming into Calaveras County. Since my first board meeting with the Visitors Bureau in July of 2022, there's been discussion about how to increase visibility to all areas off of the Highway 4 and 49 corridors. We recognize an area of opportunity is increasing visibility to all parts of the county. A large number of the events are sourced directly from our staff, who spend time scouring websites, social media pages, calling different businesses, trying to get data for their events. Part of our marketing campaign for the upcoming year is providing easy access for event hosts to share their information with us, which would hit an audience, by the way, of 1.2 million impressions to our website per year, and approximately 50,000 impressions per month on our socials. I want to highlight that 63% of our budget goes relatively unseen to the average resident of Calaveras County. It goes towards marketing. That is exactly where it should go, toward inviting people from across the world to come experience Calaveras. They come because they have seen an advertisement in the National Geographic, they hear a radio advertisement, pick up a catalog at the airport, or read an article from a travel writer, or saw a post by an influencer hosted by the Visitors Bureau, which we've had quite a few over the years. The CVB regularly welcomes groups of travel writers, bloggers, and influencers to showcase Calaveras. The marketing we do is strategic, thoughtful, and multivacated. Another exciting piece that we added on this year that didn't get enough attention is our relationship with Placer AI. For the first time, our county can get actual data on how many people visit a location or event, where they come from, how long they stayed, and where they visited right before and went to afterwards. This valuable information will fine-tune our marketing strategies going forward. I fully understand the needs of our county far outweigh the dollars that you guys have to distribute, but I ask that you consider the reason those dollars do come into the county, tourism, our largest industry, and ask that you continue to allow us to promote and encourage guests to stay and play in Calaveras. And I would be happy to speak with any of you if you have questions.
Thank you, Morgan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the Lord. My name is Tom Hicks with CV Development Partners. As you know, we own the Copalapus Town Square and the golf course in Corvale. As you know, we also have 17 two-bedroom bungalows down at the golf course, that's enrolled in the program. We have 29 rooms at the Gateway Hotel in, in the town square. We're embarking on a program to build out the rest of the town square, and we're working with Planning and Building Department on that right now. Hopefully by September, October this year, we're going forward with about a $60 million program to build out the rest of the square. It's long overdue, it's been there since 2007 with no new development. In that is approximately 50 new overnight accommodations, 16,000-square-foot entertainment building with indoor golf and attractions for kids upstairs and game rooms. Visitor dollars are critical to us, and we work very closely with the Visitor Bureau, and we would like to see those dollars stay there. We were here when we first came up, the TOT was 6%. It went up to 12%, which doubled, obviously, and we supported that, because we thought how important it was for those dollars to be put back into the economy here to grow the tourism business. We saw during COVID, obviously, most people were down. We actually saw an increase in visitor, people from the Bay Area wanting to get out of that and come up and golf, which was a, a good sport for COVID. So we also put in a Tesla station, a charging station, 12 superchargers. We're bringing all kinds of new people, a great demographic to bring up to our area. So the visitor dollars being spent here in this community, in this county, are critical to us. So we look forward to that, and we look forward to your support in keeping those dollars where they should be. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none in the room, is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
All right, now I'll bring it back, I'm open, Ben.
I want to thank the Visitors Bureau for working with administration on your budget, and, you know, all, all the information you've provided us within the last few months, it's been educational. With that, you know, I think the recommendations by administration for the Parks Master Plan and the Chamber would be beneficial for us to facilitate that, that money, because it takes out a layer of bureaucracy, and we can give it directly to the, to those, to the Parks Master Plan and do, and the Chamber directly. And I agree with Mr. Toffenelli, this is something we're going to have to take, take a look at next year. I don't know if we can continue to, you know, 275, we've already had a, had you reduce it to $400,000 once last year, and it was pretty much status quo this year. I think that next year, taking a look at it, seeing where you're at with your budget, is definitely going to be beneficial for the county as a whole, and possibly continuing our partnership with the Chamber is something we'll have to take a look at next year also. Just, and the reason, the reason I say that more so is when we originally did the TOT slides, you see, you see 21 and 22, I believe, was our spike in our high collection on TOT, which was actually here everyone was, you know, cut in, in-house. I mean, even CVB had their doors closed, and we had, it was the anomaly where everyone came up from the city and hid up in the hills and paid that TOT. So, and then each year, you see that TOT slightly going down from there at this time. Now, if you build some more rooms and some more accommodations, that could change that situation, but the economy is something we have to be aware of working into the future. So, yes, we need to come back and look at it again next year. I'm recommending that we give the CVB this year 275 in the interest of what you do have in reserves. We understand that some of that's, you know, contingent with the city and everything else. And I would also like the board to consider giving the Chamber $50,000 directly this year. And I definitely want the $75,000 for our Parks Master Plan, Master Plan. And where it leaves me out is there's the $212 difference there, Mr. Toffenelli, that I think that's a discussion, how much of that do we want to put towards Parks also? Because we are looking at a possible position that will facilitate that getting done. Unfortunately, you weren't here for that conversation.
I wasn't.
But I'm sure you've been made aware of it.
I have. I watched the video. So are you, that, that's your comments?
That, well, that, my proposal is yes, Chamber $50,000, 275 to VSB. FIRE gets their 25%. Sheriff gets their 25%. Public Works gets their 25%.
25.
And then, and then we, we need, you know, I, I have most of the proposal there. I'm just, I'm up in the air about how much the board wants to do with that $212,000 separate. I'm good with the recommendation up until that point. What do we want to do with that other $212,000?
I think that $212,000 was going into contingency. Is that not correct?
General fund.
That, that was part of the 1.8 total contingency. Was that 212 going into that?
The, the 212 is going to the general fund, so essentially, it's offsetting the, the structural deficit. So if we move it to another place, the structural deficit would go up by the amount we move somewhere else.
Right. So.
So I'm not in favor of increasing their, our deficit, our structural deficit at this time. I think we've got, covered everything that everybody wanted, the way it's proposed right now. The issue will be next year, when CVB's not going to be contributing that way. They're going to want their whole $400,000. What do we do in continuing with the Chamber? Then we'll have to come up with that $50,000 during the budget for the, out of the TOT.
You know, maybe what we can do is we could discuss, we could figure out this TOT piece now, and we can have Mr. Huberty come back in for the Parks discussion about that 212. Or do you guys think that'd be a conflict as well?
If it's pulling from TOT?
My thought is that so long as the board has made, this segment of the board has made a decision about allocations to the Visitors Bureau, that's the piece that Supervisor Huberty has a conflict of interest on. And so if that, if that is no longer part of the discussion, then I think he could be a part of a conversation about additional funds.
All right, because then we could talk about that 212,000 and, and broader Parks discussion.
Again, so long as it's, so long as it's set, kind of what the board wants to do as to a contribution to the Visitors Bureau, as long as that piece is, is set and not part of the conversation.
We, so we can, we can break it up. We have a choice as a board to be able to do that, so we couldn't include him in on the conversation.
Yes, I don't see why not, so, so long as that's clear.
Yeah.
I have one question. So if I were to reference the 75, would that be part of a conflict into the 212 conversation?
No, I think, I think. to make a decision about what the contribution to the Visitors Bureau is going to be this year. If that piece is decided, recognizing, of course, that you haven't voted on final budget yet, but for purposes of giving direction today, if that piece is decided, then he could be a part of the rest of the discussion.
So we have a proposal, so your...
Let me clarify my proposal, Ben, and we'll see if the board wants to roll with it. 275 to CVB, 612, 500 to fire, 612, 500 to Public Works, 612, 500 to sheriff, and the rest left over there, oh, and I guess we can save $50,000 to chamber right now, right? And we can get that out of the way, and then we can continue the conversation as a whole.
You could continue the conversation about the remaining 212 plus 75, so long as part of that conversation is not potentially giving some of those funds to the CVB.
I separated, yeah, no, I already separated the CVB and everyone else, so...
What is that, 287? I'm not going to math.
That's, that's, that's my recommendation at this time, a motion or whatever we want to call it.
I think it's just, it would just be majority direction.
More, majority, for majority direction, Mr. Toffnelli. I'll leave it to you.
Supervisor Guermini, you have a question?
No, sir. They don't have a question.
I have a comment. So just for the public's sake and the conversation of the 275, I don't think it's, the amount is a lot lower, but one, at least for me, seeing the investment into recreation, because that also draws tourism, but separating it out from the CVB, so we continue to have a broader conversation, I just want to make that clear. Like, we're putting the investment back into tourism, we're just cutting it out so it's not under the umbrella of CVB. Right?
Right.
Right, my understanding is that as part of CVB's proposal, they had 75,000 budgeted for a Parks Master Plan, and the thought is the county can do that.
We can find another different, yes, and we'll use that 75. Okay, perfect.
Do I need to repeat the recommendation?
No, I think we pretty much have it.
No, I just, you know, that's a huge dollar amount into the public, you know, with their comments, we're worried about us taking money away from the CVB, and I just want to clarify, we're not, we're trying to reinvest it into our recreation tourism, and we're going to separate it out.
I agree with you 100%. And we're going to take another look at it next year to see where we're at, because this may not be a permanent...
And this is just a language thing, but it's, none of this is an entitlement. This is all at our discretion.
Right.
So we're not taking anything from anybody, we're giving it to them.
Yes, sorry if I, it's, the TOT is unrestricted general fund dollars always, yes.
Supervisor Guermini, where are you on this?
I support Supervisor Stoffer's recommendation.
Supervisor Follendorf?
I support it.
I support it?
I will support it.
We support it, I suppose? You think so? You made the proposal, so assuming.
I was assuming too.
So that gives staff direction. Okay? All right, so...
Oh, if I could make one other thing. Toffnelli, when we talked about the breakdown, when Supervisor Stoffer went through the numbers, we will true up with fire at the end of fiscal year, correct? Once we get our final, that's what we've traditionally done. Thank you.
All right, with that being done, then we can have Supervisor Huberty return to the room.
If he chooses, it's his choice. I will, I'm happy to go grab him if we want to take a brief break.
I do want to say thank you to the CVB for working with us on the budget and everything. Last time you were in here, we were a little bit hard, but I really appreciate the work and the information you sent us, and let's, we'll work better together in the future. Thank you.
Can we just take like a three-minute break?
Three-minute break. Three-minute breaks.